We'll move on to the Urbana Council meeting when the clerk is ready.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. And I did call the meeting to order. Could we approve minutes from the previous meetings from November 9th and November 23rd?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second it.
By Jared, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Are there any corrections? Bill?
Yeah. On the minutes of November 9th, it's page nine of the PDF. I'm not sure. I think it's page five of the minutes. On the part where we approved the the grant funding for economic support, said that we approved it. We changed it to net revenue of $5 million, but then we did another friendly amendment or changed the motion to $2 million net revenue, and that's what's reflected in implementation on the website. So I think just the minutes needs to be changed to $2 million's net revenue of $2 million instead of $5 million.
Did you get that, Phyllis?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Okay, any other corrections? Thanks, Bill. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any additions to the agenda? I don't believe there are any. Next item on the agenda are public input and presentations. We're going to start with presentations by the four candidates for the vacant Ward Two City Council seat. This is the seat that was previously held by Julie Laut, who resigned the position. So first up is Steve Drake, and each candidate or each applicant has been asked to speak for maximum three minutes, and we'll put the timer on so everyone can keep track. And I believe Steve is
I'm here, yeah.
in the meeting. Okay. Hi, Steve. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, great. Hello, my name is Steve Drake. I am a resident of Ward Two, lived here for 15 years. Before that, I originally from California. I'm a TV producer. I do video production for the Beckman Institute here on the campus and have previously worked at WLL TV, which is the local PBS station here. Before coming to Illinois, we lived in London and New York and New Jersey where I worked on shows for the BBC and Discovery Channel. The reason I would like to be considered for Ward Two is that given the recent election and the current state of the political divide in the US, it's clear that more people need to get involved in government and work to help their local communities. So that's what I'm trying to do here. My father passed away from COVID back in April, back in Arizona. So I know the importance of implementing public health requirements during the pandemic, especially since it'll be a few months probably before the vaccine is widely available to the general public here. We need to have the city council members who appreciate the human cost of the pandemic. I participated in the Citizens Police Academy a few years ago here in town and gained a real appreciation of how complex policing is. But I understand that we need to work to help the police and really protect the citizens. They're strong, protect and serve, and have a deeper partnership between the police and the community and improve social justice. One of the interests locally in Ward Two that I have is to try to keep the character of the ward intact, keep a balance between sustainability and fiscal responsibility and the overall lived environment while the city continues to prosper. Urbana's different than Champaign, and I think that's a good thing. There is a Savannah I don't think generally want unchecked development or to live in a city that's indistinguishable from Champaign. So I think the city council needs to strive to move towards zoning and permanent decisions that advance the city, but also always keep in mind preserving the character of the city and the values that the residents hold foremost in their mind. Like I said, I'm a video producer. One of the most important qualities and requirements in that job is to listen to people, and that's what I'll do if I'm on the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Next person to speak is Joseph Edwards.
Hey, everybody. My name's Joe. I am a seven-year resident of Urbana. I came here back in 2014 to do my undergrad, and I loved it so much, I decided to stick around for a PhD. As a student, I also am a renter. A designation I share with roughly 60% of other Urbana residents, but unfortunately, none of the city council currently. And while I really respect the work and the time that it takes to become an established member of this community, I think that it does leave a bit of the voice that people who are, you know, less enfranchised and less established within this community not having representation on the council. As a student at the university, I have served as a senator, where I also served on the Senate Executive Committee advising the chancellor and the campus at wide on sustainability, sexual assault, social justice, and campus landscaping issues. I have chaired the Student Sustainability Committee, where I'm responsible for roughly $1.5 million annual budget to provide for sustainability grants. So sustainability really is at the heart of what I would like to do for Urbana and over the next, you know, five months in this seat. I understand what these things cost. I understand the actions that need to be made to invest in them, and I think that I have the experience to do that. At the same time, I realize that this appointment is only for five months, and that several of the other folks applying right now have made it clear that they intend to run in April for that election. This will be Ward Two's first elected new representative in a little over a decade, I think, and I think it'd be a good idea to let them choose who they want that to be. I think that there's a certain amount of political influence that could be extended through this appointment in the incumbent running in April, and I think that not having incumbent coming in, filling that seat, that elected seat with new blood, would really be best for the district. So thanks for having me, and I hopefully look forward to working with you in one way or another.
Thanks, Joe. Next up is Christopher Hansen.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Okay, my name's Christopher Hansen. I've lived in Urbana for about 18 years, if you count my undergrad time here. You guys have heard from me before, the last time the Ward Two seat was vacant. So rather than, I guess, giving you the same spiel, I thought I'd just tell you a story. So last month, I was speaking at one of the city council meetings, as I often do, and I was criticizing someone, as I often do. I don't remember who, but Bill Brown was chairing the meeting. It was actually a committee of the whole meeting. And Bill Brown interrupted me, and he said, he asked if I could direct my comments toward the council as a whole. He explained that the organizational chart of the city has the council and the mayor at the top. And so any issues I had with anyone else should be directed at the mayor and the council. I've always found Bill Brown to be a very studious words person, so I kind of just took his word for it. But um last month, when I was handing in my election petition to run in the upcoming election for Ward Two, I was in the kind of the foyer of the city building, handing it over to Wendy Hundley, who was always very polite and helpful. And I happened to see the organizational chart of the city of Urbana up on the wall. And Bill Brown wasn't quite right. The city and the mayor, city council and mayor are very near the top of that organizational chart, but at the very top, it says People of Urbana. And I think that might be a fact that's gone missing in a lot of what the council has been doing lately. So I mean to see that changed. So that's why I'm applying for this seat. And as you guys know, I'll keep working on it whether I'm on the council or not. Maybe it'd be smoother if I were on the council. I'm not really sure. We could find out. It's only five months, so I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. And last to speak is Eric Sacks.
Good evening. So I'm Eric Sacks. I've lived in Ward Two for over 10 years. I'm a scientist by profession, so I'm a believer in data for having good conversations and coming to effective solutions. And we are a community of about 41,000 people, so it's also important, I think, to make sure there's good input and representation from the community as a whole. And if I were a councilperson, I would seek to engage with the community and bring as many of those views forward as I could. And this is especially important now as we are developing a new comprehensive plan for the city, and getting involvement will be critical to getting this right. I think some of the major issues facing Urbana are revitalization of the downtown. I think we have a great need to have mixed use and have more people living downtown so that the businesses are well-supported and working with those who can make that dream come true. At the same time, especially as an issue for Ward Two, but for the city as a whole, I think we need sustainable development. And by that, I mean development that will provide benefits for the city for the long term. Now, in Ward Two, for example, we're right on the edge of campus, a good chunk of the ward, and we have a historic neighborhood, beautiful old houses that attract a lot of people to live here, both renters as well as owner occupiers, an important part of our city's revenue base. And maintaining the integrity, architectural integrity, while allowing for the city to continue to grow or to grow is an important part of what we will need to encourage, and that will often come through with sound and consistent zoning. Other issues facing the city, of course, are things like climate change and providing for renewable energy, access to electrification for charging automobiles, getting ahead of the curve on these sorts of things. And of course, social justice is an important issue throughout the nation right now, and certainly in Urbana it will be so as well. And so working with the police to make sure that you know, the values that are encouraged and upheld by the board are reflected and to address the mental health crises that occur throughout the country and here the same in a more effective and humane way. So I'll just round up by saying I'm happy to work with the board and hopefully see the city prosper. Thanks very much.
Next step in this process is that I plan to bring a recommendation for appointment to a special meeting of the Urbana City Council next week. So that'll be at 7 o'clock before the regular committee of the whole meeting will be held. And I asked the council to vote on it, and then we'll swear the new candidate in virtually immediately after that. I want to thank everyone for applying. We have some very strong candidates. I've interviewed everyone at this point, and I'll be checking in with city council members later this week to get your thoughts. The applications have also been shared with the city council members. So again, thank you very much to everyone who spoke tonight, and we should have a new Ward Two representative by this time next week. I wanted to under move on. We wanted to introduce Darius White, who is one of our newest staff members and working in economic development. Stephanie McMahon, would you like to introduce him? We're not getting audio. Not really, no. How about if we ask Darius to introduce himself?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Excellent. Once again, my name is White. I'm joining the city as an economic development coordinator. It's truly a pleasure to join the city. I look forward to helping our business community and giving back. Before this, I was with the Urbana Business Association, as well as the Champagne Park District. Me and my family have been residents for Urbana for two and a half years now in the suburban. Just once again, I'm excited to join the team, happy to be a part of the economic development team, and just really look forward to giving back to our community.
And I would add, Darius is serving in a leadership capacity in Chancellor Jones' special initiative on racial and social justice in our community. So he's taken that on in addition to his economic development duties. Thank you very much, Darius, and welcome. All right, our next presentation tonight is on the plans for the comprehensive plan, and this is being presented by Andrea Rudy and Lilly Wilcock, who've been leading this effort.
I was just gonna do a little intro, if that's okay, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Okay. As the mayor said, Andrea and Lilly are gonna give an overview of where they are in the comprehensive plan process, but I want you to understand that, you know, Andrea joined us right around the time that COVID was getting, starting to get a toehold in our community, and she has just jumped in with both feet to help our efforts, and as has Lilly, but Andrea's been the real leader of all of our business outreach efforts related to COVID. And as you remember, we've had wave after wave of restrictions put in place for various business types, and we went out time and time again, and Andrea and the team have tried to stay in touch with our business community and and respond to their questions, adapt to their questions, and all of that while juggling all these comp plan efforts. So I just wanted you to understand what an asset Andrea is, Lilly is, Darius has also jumped in with both feet. So, you know, we just have a great team right now and really excited to have Andrea and Lilly present where they are with the comp plan.
Can you unmute Andrea?
Sorry. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to update you on our activities over the past few months. As you know, Lilly and I have been dedicated to this and couldn't be a better partnership, I think, between Lilly and I to have her planning expertise and my background more on the strategic side and having the business background. It's just been a great combination, and we just can't wait to share some of the things that we're doing or have been doing with you and the exciting things that we have planned. I'm gonna share my presentation here, and hopefully that works just fine. Okay, can everybody see that presentation?
It looks good.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. So I don't need to tell everyone what a comprehensive plan is, but traditionally, it's a plan that contains a general vision and goals to guide policy development and resources for the city. Urbana, however, is doing it a little bit differently in that we not only are incorporating the traditional aspects of a comprehensive plan, and you can see some of those here, transportation, land use, housing, et cetera, but we're also infusing many aspects of Urbana life, and that includes our arts and culture scene. So we really want to capture from our communities that populate Urbana. We want their ideas on what makes Urbana unique and how we can capitalize that and going forward. Everybody's familiar with the roadmap that we presented early in this process. The roadmap is just that. It's a guide, but things are gonna change as we go. Just for instance, with COVID hitting, that certainly may just take a detour a little bit on some of our plans. However, it also gave us the opportunity to look at things differently and how we're gonna outreach during this time. So people are already more accustomed now. They know they can't meet in person on different things anymore, and so they're receptive to Zoom calls, et cetera. So we're capitalizing on that, and you'll see some of the tools that we have in place that Lilly has been diligently working on, our website in particular, and you'll see some of that later in some slides. But the thing, the intent of the community engagement process, and as it says here, we really do intend to have this be very extensive to identify the goals and vision for our community. But we want as many, we want to provide the opportunity for all of Urbana's diverse population to have a voice. And to do that is gonna require a lot of different methods of outreach, not just the website, but many hands-on things that are possibly more traditional, even going to door when acceptable, surveys, handing out flyers, working with community groups that can provide us that audience with their constituents so that we're able to reach all these these different populations in Urbana's diverse community. So we've come up with some branding. This was early on in the process. We had a small staff group that interviewed graphic designers. Our graphic designer does come from Urbana, and she works for the University of Illinois. And we came up with the theme called Imagine Urbana, and we really do think that this captures the essence of what we're trying to achieve is that we want people to really use their imagination, and what do you want Urbana to be? What do you want your community to be, where you live, work, play, and study? And so the Imagine Urbana, you see the light bulb, which is indicative of having new ideas and thoughts. And so this is our branding. And then some of the other things that we've been working on, as you already know, we've allocated staff resources. We've also dedicated a staff working group that has been bouncing off ideas, giving input, feedback all along the way. And we have a data group that Lilly has formed as well, and we can get into that a little bit later as well. The data group is really different in that they're gonna be looking at how to tell the story of the different themes that develop. And we have no preconceived ideas of what this plan is gonna look like. We really intend it to be organic, and that the ideas and the themes that will eventually be in our plan bubble up from the feedback that we get from the community. And all during that process, we want it to be as transparent as possible. When you see the website, when we launched that in January, all the feedback that we receive via the website will be visible to everyone. We're not editing out negative comments. That's what we want to hear. We want to hear that kind of feedback. We will, of course, edit out anything that might be not follow our public input policies as far as derogatory language, things like that, but we want to hear positive and negative feedback, and it will be posted on the website. How do we think that we're gonna be able to reach all these populations? How do we determine the success of that? We're looking at, the website, of course, will have a registration field where people can put optional information where they live. They can even put their ward in there, which is information we'd like to gather to know what specific issues impact each ward. But we don't know, you know, it's optional. And so we're really gonna be monitoring the type of feedback we get, knowing what the different populations are in community. And if we don't see that we're getting a big enough percentage, we're gonna have to regroup and find other ways to outreach. And many of those things will be hands-on. And we'll go into some of these tools. So the staff working group, we talked about, the designer. One of the other things that we're gonna do all along the way is have informative videos to really tell people about their community, different aspects of it that maybe they're not as familiar with. So having experts in residence, for instance, maybe a speaker on affordable housing, to know what that really means in our community and what that entails so that people can give us feedback on what they think about that and what they think about how that can apply to our comprehensive plan and our vision for the community. So some of these outreach tools, we have everything from, like I said, the website to postcards that we intend to give people to return either via some sort of ballot box that they can drop them in, mail them back to us. We'll also have yard signs that talk about how they can text to us, giving them a texting tool that they can easily provide feedback if they don't have internet access, they don't have access to the web. They don't necessarily have to have a smartphone in order to text, so that'll be another option that we can use that we think that people are really going to be amenable to, especially during this COVID pandemic that we're all in. So again, identifying voices throughout the community. We've got a list, and I'll show you that in a minute, of some of the groups that we've identified, not only to reach out to specifically, but also to provide us a way to reach their constituents. And we've already started meeting with some of those folks as well. So we're calling those community partners. And for instance, just this past couple of weeks, we met with the Arts and Culture Council. We've also met with Champagne County Continuum of Service Providers for the Homeless, which contains a very large representation of agencies and groups that we've now exposed the plan to and are trying to work with them to get involved with the events that they're having. So that's a way to, hopefully, we can spur interest as well as trust in the process because we're going through groups that hopefully different populations are familiar with and are already interacting with. We had a great meeting last week with Danielle Chinowith and some of the programs that she has, where we really feel like we can outreach specifically to the homeless and hopefully get direct feedback from some of her cohorts. So the list that we've identified, and this list keeps growing, and we know it's gonna evolve as we go through the plan. These are groups that we've identified that we know we want to get specific feedback from, but there are many, many other groups and subgroups of these groups that we're outreach to as well. You see on here that we have youth, for instance. We want to know what our future residents want to see in the community. And we have just signed on an intern that comes from the Excellence Program at Urbana High School, and we hope to be able to use her to do outreach to youth via social media and other ways that we can reach out and get their feedback as well. We also have a, the university's urban planning department has dedicated a graduate-level course this spring to our plan with the goal of helping us outreach via community engagement methods that they'll come up with. So a different avenue to be able to outreach to the community. So specifically on our website, we went with a provider that really specifically has expertise in municipalities. So they understand the different confidentiality aspects of working with the city, the information that we have, and the different planning processes that we go through. So the group that we went with, one of their features that we specifically liked was called the Ideal Wall, and it's a place where people can go on and post general comments about various topics. And from that, we hope then to get feedback in these various kind of buckets, whether it's affordable housing or infrastructure, land use, safety, sustainability. So these are topics that we hope will then lead into our themes from this various feedback that we get off of this ideal wall. We'll also have a short survey that will be on the website that's more open-ended, giving us, you know, very like I said, open-ended comments about our community rather than on specific topics, which would become later. After we get this initial feedback, we can then go back and develop these themes further, publicize those to the public, and then maybe these individuals will be willing to serve on focus groups and participate in more active feedback on these individual topics that will come out of this. Another feature is an interactive map where you can pin places in Urbana and provide us both positive as well as construction, constructual items, ideas that they have for that area. So it might be something on their favorite place where they could post a picture about, maybe it's an art festival that they attended, and this is a place that they really enjoyed. Or it's something that, hey, this is a safety issue in my community or in my neighborhood that I want to address. We'll also have different informative videos. Uh, we'll also have different informative videos. Uh, one video I'll go into a little bit later, we've got our first series that we've come out with that will be posted on a YouTube playlist that people can, uh, go and learn more about their community. And then they can also receive future communications, how they see fit. So if they would like to really be involved in, uh, hands-on focus groups, webinars, et cetera, they can certainly do that. Or if they just want updates on the process along the way, it's whatever they choose, they can be as involved as they want to be. So in talking about, uh, the educational videos that we'd like to use, uh, the first one series that we've already, uh, filmed and we're getting ready to post that on the website, I think, uh, some of you may have seen the link that was in the packet materials that showed, um, uh, one of those videos and it was of Julie Pride talking about the Champagne Urbana Public Health District. Well, the other groups, you can see them listed here. So it's every, uh, agency that has an impact on our community and also is funded by property taxes from our residents. So we're, um, giving a little, uh, background on what those groups do, what their mission is, and, uh, what services they provide to our community. So we thought this would be helpful for people to get additional information about our community. So our timeline for this next year, our launch for the website, uh, will take place in January. We're getting, uh, close to that. We're doing some testing on it to make sure everything's working properly. Our, uh, staff steering group is going to be looking at that even tomorrow, uh, getting some, uh, experience in, in navigating that site and hopefully finding any bugs ahead of time. Uh, we, the educational events, uh, those are going to be ongoing. Uh, we're meeting with partners right now that, uh, can give us that feedback and those events that we want to get scheduled. So we'll be scheduling events, uh, really that whole first, uh, first and second quarter of next year, we hope to have, uh, participation in numerous events to, for outreach. So joining those community partners and sharing information about the plan, but more importantly, having access to their members so that we can get the feedback that we need, uh, to develop the plan and the vision for our community. So as I mentioned, this first phase, uh, we'll get feedback which will help us identify themes and then we'll be able to share those with the public, uh, to get additional feedback. So all along the way, uh, we want to be transparent, we want to give, get feedback as we receive it. We'll be doing various interim reports along the way to provide more information, especially to the Plan Commission and of course City Council. And we'll be revi- refining that feedback as we get more public input. So we intend to have a preliminary report, um, this fall that will go into more detail, not just the themes, but, uh, really more of an executive summary that we'll be able to provide. So that's our, um, background. I know I covered a lot of information. I can't wait to hear the questions that you have and, and feedback that you can give us to help us refine this. And if you have specific questions, Lilly's here as well and hopefully between the two of us and, uh, Carol as well, we can answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Any questions for the team? Mary Alice?
I guess, um, you kind of answered several of my questions that you went through the presentation, so thank you for that. One of my, one of my concerns was reaching out to the youth. Um, it's usually challenging when we're not in COVID and especially now. So I'm really happy to hear that you have an intern, is that what you called her?
Yes.
That's great. That's fabulous that you have an intern. Uh, there's also other, I know, I know personally of some university classes that have looked at, um, projects in Urbana and I'm going to send you some of the professors who have, who've had projects that have looked at different elements. Um, and, um, I, I love the idea of the map. I mean, that's one of the things that I was thinking about was how can we visually allow people to kind of just draw on the map what they would like to see? So you guys have done a fabulous job. I really thank you. I'm really looking forward to this process. Um, it's, uh, something that's need to be done for a long time. So I'm really happy we're dedicating the resources that are needed for this. So thank you.
Thank you. And we also, uh, on the data side, uh, we've gotten some information. I know Mary Alice, you of course have volunteered to help with, uh, some of that data analysis and, uh, also on the Plan Commission too. Uh, the Chair of the Plan Commission, uh, Mr. Fitch has volunteered his, his help as well. And believe me, we will, uh, take advantage of any help that we can get. And Lilly, um, just on the data, since we mentioned that, uh, if you could talk a little bit more about the storytelling aspect and when we're going to be getting into the data stories?
Absolutely. So, um, traditionally when a comprehensive plan comes around in a community, um, staff will usually prepare a really extensive, um, kind of report on very, um, broad and, um, general specifics from federal level data. And that's, that's really great, but it doesn't really communicate very well or very succinctly a lot of the issues that are very, um, pertinent to the comprehensive plan. They really affect people on so many different levels. There's a lot of hot button issues that we've all seen come to city council recently that really tie into a new comprehensive plan. So what we're trying to do is collect this initial form of feedback and from that initial feedback, you know, broad, broad feedback, dial it down into what the information that we can provide and trying to rely as much as possible on city level data that we do collect already and across the different departments of the city. So we actually have a lot of information. It's not sometimes the easiest or the prettiest information that you could ever, you know, use, but it's something that I think is going to be a really, tell a lot about the story of how we got here and where we want to go and also kind of address some of those issues. Or sometimes you see a lot of misinformation or you see a lot of, um, a lot of serious questions that being asked of people. And so we're going to try as staff really hard to delve into those and provide information about Urbana and those issues. In a story form, not just a big 300-page report.
So this, it's digestible. Yeah. Good. Any, any other questions?
Well, thank you very, oh, Bill.
Uh, just, uh, I mean, it's going to be really challenging, I think. Um, if first, if everything's going to be remote still for the next few months, to reach out to like students and parents of students and schools and things, if there are opportunities to, uh, like do some actual events, maybe, um, if things start opening up later in the spring, to, uh, work with the Park District and School District and actually get that, uh, that demographic, um, their parents and the kids. Um, I think that's one that we don't really hear from a lot and especially when everything's electronic, some of, some folks don't have the same access or same willingness to, um, do things online. So, uh, I think that's something to kind of focus on too is, um, maybe working with co-marketing or co-doing some events with, uh, with the Park District and School District who are already, um, involved with that set of people maybe.
Yeah, I think that's a great point that you bring up and I'm sorry we didn't elaborate on that further. Uh, we are preparing for different events that we hope that are in-person. Uh, for instance, uh, we have, uh, one of our, our outreach methods is using a mobile whiteboard. Um, now, pre-COVID, uh, we could have been there and we could have been writing down ideas or having people write those ideas on the board. Uh, we're looking at that a little bit differently, providing maybe Post-it notes that people can write their own and post it when we're out at different places. Maybe we're, um, you know, uh, downtown, uh, we're outside the library, you know, something visible, uh, trying to do it within COVID, uh, guidelines. But yeah, we're, we're really trying to think out of the box on how we can still reach people in person. And I know we heard that from our intern too, Lilly, when we met with her. Interesting, she said that students still are better one-on-one. And so I think we all think about these groups and social media that they all are part of, but to get information from them, she said, you can't do it as a group. You have to reach out one-on-one with them, even if it's just, uh, one-on-one via social media. But she made it, she opened our eyes up and yeah, you know, everything's different right now and we have to be adaptable and be willing to listen to other, other ways of outreach. Uh, so like I said, that, that roadmap, we're going to take a lot of detours along the way, but, uh, I think our, our product is going to get us there.
Any other questions? Well, thanks Andrea and Lilly. Um, my goal for this whole process, but large, large speaking is I wanted it to be a, um, about civic education and civic engagement. And that's what makes this process, I think, um, as valuable as the product because it's going to get people involved. And really we are developing a vision for the future of the community. So, so all the different ways we reach people is going to have an impact on this product. And as people have, have seen, we use the comp plan to, to guide development, to guide, um, planning, to, to guide zoning, to evaluate everything that comes, many of the things that come before the city council. So, so this is a great opportunity to, um, help educate the community, to engage the community, and we're looking very much forward to this process. It's already been extremely helpful to this point. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Um, next item on the agenda is public input. And we'll go to attendees. Um, first person with the hand up is Alan Max Axelrod.
Uh, good afternoon or evening. Uh, could you put the clock up? I'm going to be a little disorganized. Thank you. Much appreciated for four minutes. Um, so I wanted to talk to you about Illinois American Water. And, um, I talk about this from, uh, personal experience, but also from some observations. I hate them. I hate them a lot. Um, I have to put my water in a separate container with a carbon filter and let it sit for 10, 15 minutes before it's safe to drink. Back when I had a roommate and we didn't know that we needed this filter, uh, there was a change that happened with our water and it was like a flick of the switch. When we started to, as we had done for years prior, drink from the tap, uh, we started to get migraines, both of us. A film basically remained in our teeth for hours. We couldn't even get rid of it by brushing our teeth. We called Illinois American Water and they came, tested the water, said it was fine and then suggested a filter. And fortunately, at least the cheap Brita filter that we were using, uh, seems to be enough. But I bring up that anecdote to convey how I feel about the fact that Illinois American Water is hiding behind gaps in state law to refuse to even disclose disconnect notices to the Champagne Urbana Public Health District. I double-checked the state statutes and it only required that of electric and gas utilities. It does not require that of water utilities. And when looking in this region and seeing that Springfield has a municipal water supplier, Decatur has a municipal water supplier, Bloomington and Normal have municipal water suppliers. I'm wondering why not us? That's a larger project, might even create some union jobs. The more immediate need is to apply pressure to Illinois American Water who is still allowed to disconnect people. And the latest conversations that I've had with public officials is that they still are. That said, I know that our working relationship isn't great. I just thought that I'd provide you that information. Uh, I also wanted to say thank you for, uh, providing the, uh, shelter homes for families in the Carl rental units that have been in Ward Three. I know that real estate taxes cannot exactly be extracted from those properties. I think that's a really good use of those properties. I want to suggest that we look at maybe expanding that practice, uh, via more inter-unit agreement, uh, agreements, whether it's with Carl or with the City of Champagne. Uh, the City of Champagne is looking at, uh, sort of incremental, uh, development plan that's going to allow for a lot more flexibility of what housing can be where, what sort of, um, things can be developed where. But the City of Champagne also owns plots of land. And it may be that which could be a basis for, uh, providing more, not just private public partnership housing for families, but public housing itself. And I say this because the latest data from the American Community Survey's five-year estimate is out and Urbana's number of vacant housing units increased by roughly 100 and change. Our county-wide HUD homeless population is 140. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Minnie Pearson.
Honestly, I was running across my computer and doing some other things and it wasn't me, but I'm listening and thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you, Minnie. Next up is Christopher Hansen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Christopher Hansen again. Um, there are a great number of accumulated issues, um, mostly in regards to public access to the Urbana government, um, that have not been addressed or not being addressed. For example, um, all of the FOIA violations that have been very well documented at this point, um, city just lost a FOIA lawsuit, um, and that's going to cost the taxpayers. Uh, I'd like to hear the council speak about those issues, uh, further. Issues about, uh, Open Meetings Act, uh, public speaking times. Uh, there's one issue that I hope you guys can clarify right now after I finish speaking, which is when, when you pass these speaking rules, did you intend that members of the public would be able to speak up to four minutes if that's how long the speaker wanted to talk? Because that's not what the city attorney is arguing. City attorney is telling the Illinois Attorney General that the speaking rules, uh, do not state who has the authority to reduce a speaker's time. Um, so that, uh, his argument is that at any point, I mean, for example, right now the mayor could mute me at this instant, um, because the council didn't make clear in their written rules, who has the authority to reduce a speaker's time. Uh, I think it's obvious that the council meant that a speaker should be able to speak, um, up to, uh, the timeline, but I hope the council can clarify that. Also, uh, the council did not define what a virtual meeting is in section two-five of the city code. Uh, that caused some problems at our recent electoral board hearing because it wasn't clear, uh, or it was clear to me that you should have been following section two-four of the city code. Um, but I think you guys need to clarify that and what applies to hybrid meetings. Um, I'd also like to know, uh, I sent you guys an article recently where the city administrator had, you know, essentially said the city can threaten or, or is threatening, uh, sanctions upon, uh, board members for disclosing, uh, information about closed sessions. And my understanding is that is illegal and I made some citations to support that. I can't find anything in the city code or Illinois state statute that would allow the city to sanction council members or board members for disclosing anything about closed sessions. So I'm hoping you guys can explain that. It seems like a pretty serious free speech problem. I'll also note that the city hasn't released any official statement on the, on the Ale Lewis arrest. I mean, there were several meetings and, and many statements issued, you know, claiming that the city, uh, the police department didn't do anything wrong, but we know that's not the case now. So I'm wondering when there's going to be some official clarification there. And, uh, yeah, it just seems like all of these issues just keep accumulating and, you know, there's plenty of time for the city council and the mayor and city staff to speak up, you know, to defend their actions. But when it turns out that, uh, you know, officially misconduct or things weren't done properly or legally, we just, we just go silent to the public and I just don't, I don't understand it. And it just, it causes people to get frustrated more and more over time. And, and I think it was last week I tried to make the point, but I, I think it was, Dennis Robert, multiple council members who, uh, oh, public input is getting, is getting better now after we had these new rules, um, in place. And I, I think that's a misreading of the situation. I think what's happening is, is, uh, some portion of the public is just completely giving up on the city council because they, they feel they've brought these problems forward and, and they tried and they tried and they tried and, you know, we're essentially told to go away. And, uh, I, I think, I think having, having less public input is probably much worse than having, you know, public input from a bunch of people who are upset. I think that's a bad sign. That means the portion of the public have kind of given up on you. So, uh, I think you should reconsider what that actually means. Uh, and I, I do hope you'll clarify some of these issues, um, especially the public input rules.
Okay. Next speaker is Tracy Chong.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. Uh, first I would like to thank Jared Miller for proposing setting aside a time for you First, I would like to thank Jared Miller for proposing setting aside a time for you guys to respond to the public. It was kind of ironic to hear Phyllis Clark say that public input is the time for it. Having trouble keeping up with the rules, maybe it's because the rules don't make sense and are contradictory to what is needed to build a good relationship between the government and the public. Next, I thought I had seen rather terrible dishonesty and disregard for policy by the city. But Carol Mitten's latest letter to the Human Relations Commission was really quite remarkable. Have you guys read her letter to the HRC regarding the special hearing, the last hearing? At the November 10th special HRC hearing, it was a unanimous decision by the panel that the city's hiring practices needs to comply with the human rights ordinance with regards to discriminatory hiring practices. The panel also unanimously agreed that based on the current ordinance, the HRC does have jurisdiction over the hiring practices of the city. What's alarming is that Carol Mitten wrote a letter to HRC saying that the city is regarding the outcome of the hearing and moving forward in the future, the HRC has no jurisdiction to ensure the city follows its own anti-discrimination policies. She also then says that the outcome of hearing is void because of a technicality. So I feel that it's really alarming that the city's leadership can just void an outcome of any hearing if they don't agree with the outcome. How can you guys sit there and say that this kind of leadership is acceptable? What kind of example does this set for the other city employees? Is it surprising that the city is going in the opposite direction of transparency when its leadership is giving such a terrible example? I'm glad that Jared Miller last week brought up critical questions about the proposed One Door Program. The two presentations thus far by lieutenants and this have been rather vague and superficial, but they are requesting quite a bit of money. So it seems like the first big chunk of money is going to hire by Rosicrans, but we have really not been given much information about the search process, the hiring process. How is it going to be conducted? And considering the incestuous relationships with Urbana Police Department and the City of Urbana hires and the dishonest track record of UPD, I think we need a lot more information regarding this program. That, and this program seems to be mostly driven forward by UPD. So I hope you guys continue to ask more questions and actually get concrete examples of, and, and concrete steps forward instead of just some vague presentation coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Nixon.
Hello. This is Sarah Nixon, longtime resident of Urbana-Champaign. And I am speaking to the council this evening. First of all, I would like to express gratitude to Jared Miller for his advocacy recently on behalf of the great many community members who are impacted by mental health challenges. I've noted, and I think many have noted, that Mr. Miller has raised questions and concerns at city council meetings about the One Door Program. And his concerns and questions are quite on target. And we do not seem to be hearing responses that are meaningful and adequate. Reports that we're hearing that have been made to council so far seem very thin on key details. And as Mr. Miller has pointed out, the project structure itself is entirely lacking in community stakeholder voices. So, for one thing, let's talk about homophobia, transphobia, and Christian fundamentalism. I'd really like to see the city council meaningfully address the fact that CU at Home is a fundamentalist Christian organization. And we've seen the Urbana Police Department just slip them in, CU at Home, slip them in under the dorsal as a fait accompli. Look ma, CU at Home is our service delivery partner. No deliberation, no open call for submissions from competing and more philosophically inclusive and holistic mental health services providers. No vetting process. Instead, we have a handpicked done deal. Here's who we're working with. And so who are we working with? An organization whose mission philosophy is homophobic, transphobic, and vilifies any religious or spiritual path that is not biblical fundamentalist. I'm truly concerned that no one but Alderman Miller has addressed this issue. I've raised it during public input during at least one city council meeting before. And I'd really like to know where the city council members stand on inclusivity. I'd like to know if you share my concern for religious inclusion and advocacy for the LGBTQ community. We're hearing a lot of rhetoric and lip service from the city about reaching out to our populations, our communities, our marginalized, you know, populations within Urbana. And yet here we have an issue where you're dealing with mental, a community crisis, mental health services provider that is going to be responding to members of the community who are experiencing very vulnerable moments, very vulnerable crises. This provider needs to be 100% secular, not faith, not faith-based. I mean, that should just go without saying. As well, people struggling with mental health concerns are extremely vulnerable mentally. Again, that goes without saying, it's self-evident. And we often see this kind of vulnerability exploited by unscrupulous religious organizations and cults who, you know, pursue an agenda to proselytize, convert, and, and so on. This is extraordinarily unhelpful for members of the marginalized communities, whom I've already listed, who are in need of crisis service intervention. I, I feel sure that if actual psychologists and therapists were actually actively involved in planning the One Door Project, they would insist on eliminating the Christian mission agenda of CU at Home. What else? People struggling with sexual identity and/or sexual orientation issues are, of course, another population that is disproportionately impacted or can be disproportionately impacted by mental health concerns. I fear that people in these groups will be vulnerable to the revictimization should they pass through the threshold of the Open Door Program. Again, biblical fundamentalists condemn much of human sexuality as evil, most particularly.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Okay. Minnie Pearson, your hand is still up. We'll give you one more chance.
I'm so sorry. Just ignore me, please.
Okay, I will. Thank you very much. All right. That seems to do it for public input tonight. We will move on to unfinished business. There is none. Reports of the standing committees, and this will be Bill Culbrook.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee, the whole met last Monday, December 7th. Several items were discussed. The first item on the agenda was the consent agenda. All materials listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Specifically, and the consented agenda is Resolution Number 2020-12-06R, a resolution certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium. Next up is Resolution Number 2020-12-065R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement. And lastly, Resolution Number 2020-12-06R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bill Culbrook, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Culbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next up on the regular agenda is Ordinance Number 2020-12-068, an ordinance ratifying emergency order 20-11, the temporary ban of on-premises indoor consumption of food and beverages to include alcoholic liquor within City of Urbana corporate limits. This was passed on to the council with a recommendation for approval, but it's also pending a change of an expiration date. So before I move for approval, do we want to discuss the expiration date specifically?
Yes. And in the amended order, there, the language changed to read, "This emergency order 2011 shall expire when Tier 3 resurgent mitigation guidelines are suspended or terminated." This order is a bit different than the other orders because it's tied specifically to Tier 3 guidelines and specifically to a very specific portion of those guidelines. And that's related to indoor dining and food and beverage consumption. And it was at the request of the Public Health District. So expiration, it will expire when either we move out, when we move out of those Tier 3 mitigation, either up or down, either more restricted or less restricted. There's also a typo duration of emergency order. It should read, the underlying portion should read 20-11, not 20-08.
So with those changes, on behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Moved by Bill Culbrook, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Will, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Culbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next up on the agenda is Ordinance Number 2020-12-069, an ordinance ratifying emergency order 20-12, authorizing participation in Urbana and Champaign Sanitary District COVID-19 Related Financial Assistance Program regarding sanitary sewer and stormwater utility bills. Similarly, this was passed on to the full city council with no recommendation. And the note I've got is we need more information.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Bill Culbrook, seconded by Sharice. With us tonight is Rick Manor from the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District. And I believe Carol wanted to introduce.
Yes. Rick, Rick is here to answer your questions. I had sent on the questions that you had posed last week. And so he's going to start with responses to those. And then if you have any follow-up, he's, he's here to answer those as well. So go ahead, Rick. Thanks for coming.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. So I'll start with just a general conversation or discussion first. Please recognize this payment assistance plan that we are adopting at UCSD. Spans four communities plus we cover unincorporated areas. So we're actually serving five different communities. We have various intergovernmental agreements with yourselves and then also the other government agencies that we work with. And so we have a number of strings attached to what we can do. And so, and so we needed to develop a plan that was amenable to all of you combined. In addition, we try and do our work efficiently. We only bill you 3% of the income that is billed for our administrative fees. We only have three staff members working on this, producing about 1,000 bills a day are being processed through our offices. And so that too provides some degree of limitation on how much we can customize and do unique things with any set of individual bills. Every subtlety and every customizing is another potential source of error. And then once you have one error, it ripples through the system and causes a lot of grief. So to some of the questions that were specifically asked for. The first was, is there flexibility regarding the maximum 1% or the $50 per household? There was the added comment, some council members were wanting to increase the limits. Regarding the 1% amount, that we feel is likely to be something that will last for a few months. And so the intent of this program is that we're partnering with Regional Planning Commission, their LIHE program. They will process various applicants, forward the appropriate accounts to UCSD for further processing. So we'll have a lot of interaction between ourselves and the Regional Planning Commission on a weekly basis. In addition to that, as we see people partake in the, in the program, we will be communicating with your finance departments in regards to how much is being used up. So I think that 1% number can be examined over time. And if we do find that it is problematic, we can be talking to you about exactly what is possible. But I hope that it lasts the entirety of the program and that it at least lasts several months so that we have a good deal of flexibility. Regarding the $50 per household maximum benefit, first, I'd like to point out that that's, your write-offs is $50. UCSD is also talking about a $50 write-off that is in addition to that. And so the amount per household is $100 in the most extreme circumstances. And this one, I will rely on the idea of keeping things consistent amongst all the communities and say that we did intentionally set it at a level that we thought would be amenable to all of the communities. In regards to the ability to go beyond that, I'd say that one thing that is very important is to recognize that this is not an exclusive program. This does not have to be the only program. And in fact, it hasn't been because we have not had a program before now. Regional Planning Commission and LIHE have solicited grant funding for other opportunities. And there's other assistance programs out there. And all of those are, are and always remain available in addition to this. And so this is not the only solution to wastewater utility billing problems in the city. This is just one of the possible ways that things can be resolved. And so in particular, if Urbana Council sees, in particular, if you see gaps that are significant and important to you, I'd recommend you recognize that this is here in a known quantity. And if you want to expand and fill those gaps, that you are able to do that. And that I'd recommend you consider going that way rather than just talk about increasing this one program as being the sole solution. There was a question about what's an average cost of a bill. Recognize that the bill for our services are what we call our user charge and the bills for your sewer maintenance charge is, both are based on the water usage. And so it varies up and down depending on how much water is used in a given home. When a typical bill is about $30 for a typical, you know, four-person household or something like that. About of that $30 per month, about half of that comes to UCSD for payment for user charges. And about half is shared with the communities either for maintenance charges, stormwater fees, and then in Urbana's case, your recycling tax. Next question was how many bills are behind? District-wide, about 10% are past due any amount. We have seen a sharp uptick recently in the number of people that are past due and that is concerning because frankly, 10% is tolerable. It's worrisome. Going much higher, it starts to become increasingly worrisome and concerning. Within the city of Urbana itself, there are 636 residents that have any amount past due. Of those, roughly a third, 211, are more than 90 days past due. And a good fraction that are in that last And a good fraction that are in that last category that are at least ninety days past due, a good fraction have not paid since COVID started back in March, and we've just seen their total indebtedness increase incrementally month by month by month. But then the average amount, when you look back at all six hundred and thirty six accounts, the average amount past due is about sixty three dollars. Next question was, do people have to participate in LIHEAP? And there was a concern about social security number and citizens and non-citizens with and such. So first, in the general question of partnering with LIHEAP, this is at, at UCSD, I felt very pleased to find that we could partner with the Regional Planning Commission, and they're, they're working on LIHEAP. I've known about LIHEAP for decades because they've been around that long. I think it is a very good, well-established program. In particular, also is well-known already amongst low-income community that there is this option for assistance and recognize that any program that we develop would need a, need participants to come to it. And we at UCSD employ exactly zero people in our PR department because we have nobody to do that. Three quarters of our staff runs the plant, another quarter in the administrative area, and so we're pretty lean. And so we really don't have any mechanism to do a good job on the PR aspect of things, and so we thought partnering with Regional Planning Commission worked out really well. They have staff that have been doing this for a very long time, and that's also important because there's a lot of subtleties and complexities in terms of privacy and things like that, and they've already been doing this and they have that down. Whereas if we tried to start up anything brand new, I would have great concerns about how well we could do that as essentially being the first time at bat needing to hit a grand slam. And so I much prefer handing the bat off to somebody who's been doing this for a long time. I did reach out to them and inquire in regards to a citizen requirement, and they said that that does not apply. And that I, I do remember being impressed with their privacy agreements in their contract when we were negotiating with them, our intergovernmental agreement. They originally provided us their contract with their private utility partners, and it had extensive issues in practices in that, that they already do in regards to privacy. Much of those details were cut out from our agreement with Regional Planning Commission because basically the amount of information that we are going to be sharing with Regional Planning is tiny. They will be doing their standard review of accounts on income verification, but that is what they already do for all of their other LIHEAP programs. With regards to UCSD, they'll be just checking off a box saying, yes, they qualify for LIHEAP assistance, and they'll be checking if there is a past due amount for UCSD bill. Once they check off those two aspects, they will forward that account information to UCSD and we'll take it from there. And so we won't have any information in regards to privacy that we don't already have in our own billing system, that we need for our own billing system, but in regards to the LIHEAP and the eligibility, our two vats of information are distinct and separate. All that we will be getting is accounts and addresses for us to look at and to assess. And then lastly was Carol was asking, or there was a question in regards to recycling fee and the logistics of forgiving that. And frankly, I'll have to say, we'll have to get back to you on exactly what to do about that, that I, I need first to have a better understanding of your preference. And then we'll see what we can do in regards to that. And unfortunately, that's all that I can say right now, in addition to the limitations that I mentioned earlier about government issues and intergovernmental agreements, you know, one more issue, which is our billing software. And so if it's not in the program, I may not be able to do it even if we would like to. And so I, I can't answer that particular question right now fully. We're still working out the logistics ourselves. And with that, I think I've addressed all the questions that you pre-provided, and I'm more than happy to answer any others.
Any questions for Rick? Mary Alice?
Thank you, Rick, for all those details and for coming tonight. I think one of the issues with the citizen question was whether or not somebody needed a social security number to apply for LIHEAP, and there are many international people who don't have a social security number if they're not working, because that's the only reason that they would need one. So are you familiar with that process?
I'm not familiar enough to answer that intelligently. I, I do understand that they work with people across the county and that my expectation is they have probably addressed this adequately because they immediately said, oh, sure, we have no problem with non-citizens. So to the extent that a non-citizen wouldn't have a social security number, it seems to me that they should have addressed this in some way. I don't know what it is. But I can look into it a little further if that is insufficient.
Jared?
Oh, hearing some of these answers, it made me realize that I never even asked the question about how exactly does someone apply for this benefit? Is it if they apply for LIHEAP, UCSD gets a notice, but it's the overall LIHEAP application itself? There isn't a separate application that's going to exist just for this relief by and by itself?
Right, that we tried to piggyback on top of the pro, LIHEAP program as much as possible, and so the Regional Planning Commission employee will have a slightly different form that would include. Let me first start with the basic for the applicant, it will seem no different than before. That they will be applying and the income verification, which is the primary criteria they use to confirm eligibility, which is two hundred percent of the poverty limit. If that is met, then there will be one additional question, which is, I guess, two questions. Are you a UCSD customer and do you have a past due bill? And if they do, then they'll, then that particular account and address information will be forwarded to UCSD for further consideration. And at that point in time, that customer won't deal with Regional Planning Commission or LIHEAP anymore for our bill. It will be UCSD will notify, will evaluate the eligibility, apply our rules to what is eligible, and in particular, we're talking about owner occupied residences. We didn't figure out a good way to apply this to rental units. And so we're, we're not doing that. We're doing it for owner occupied residences. And if they're eligible, we'll let them know if, how much their past due, how much is written off, and that'll be applied to the next bill. And if they're not eligible, we'll notify them of that as well. And so we'll go from there pretty straightforward.
Jared?
So it sounds like it is, and I, like, it's a LIHEAP application, and it is applying for LIHEAP. It's just, if you do it, you'll, you may see a couple of additional questions in the LIHEAP application?
Right, that my understanding is that the way LIHEAP works is they're, they're talking to somebody who's processing the application with them, and they'll just ask those two additional questions. And, you know, on the flip side, if there was somebody who only heard about this via being behind on the UCSD bill, presumably they would appreciate the possibility of being evaluated for other utility assistance. I expect it's going to be easily ninety percent the former where it will be a typical LIHEAP applicant will discover that different from the past, there is the potential for a sewer benefit in addition to all of the benefits that they had previously. And so my expectation is in more grow on the LIHEAP side than it will be from the UCSD side.
And then if they are eligible, once that information forwards on to you, you guys basically automatically apply the benefit and notify the customer after it's been applied?
Right, we'll figure out the limitations, we'll apply our rules for eligibility, we'll look at that one percent ceiling, we'll confirm the communities are voluntarily involved in this program and apply our rules and determine the result. In particular, the amount that might be written off that's possible.
If for whatever reason, a resident was rendered ineligible due to some discrepancy on there, you would also notify them of, of that as well? And how they might be able to, what they might be able to do about that?
Yeah, we work with people all the time in regards to the details of their bills. Let me also advise one other detail of the program that we established. Recognize that if somebody has not paid a bill since March, they would probably be, have a bill greater than a hundred dollars that is past due. And so one other aspect of the plan that we have done and already established is a payment plan option, which people can voluntarily participate in right now, which talks about getting people to fully pay it off within a year. If there is still an outstanding balance after the payment assistance write-off has been done, the people will have to, the ratepayer will have to participate in a payment plan to bring it around to full compliance and fully paid off bill. And that's the idea that this is meant to be an assistance plan. It is not meant to just be something where we're writing off debt across the board because if we did that, well, frankly, our bills have to be paid, so there, there is an obvious limit as to how much we can just write off across the board. The vast majority of our income comes from user charges, and so completely eliminating user charges or making them voluntary is about as impractical as the city making real estate taxes voluntary. You know, it just, we can't do that. We still rely upon people actually getting a bill and paying for the service that they've used.
Rick, do, do you know, you gave us a percent of Urbana citizens who are behind at any amount. Do you have a total of all of what it, what is behind owned by those citizens right now?
The, I can give you the district-wide numbers off the top of my head because we just had our board meeting a week or two ago. We've had about four hundred, and now it just ramped up to five hundred and sixty thousand dollars total indebtedness, any amount past due, and that was spread out amongst, I believe it was four thousand some residential accounts. And so you can see that it's roughly a hundred some dollars per account overall. And again, that, that's about ten percent of our accounts. That is closer to five percent of our total in, come, yes, five percent of our total income from user charge, plus or minus, you know, five to ten percent max. So as you can imagine, that, that amount is tolerable for a one-year situation. If we were to double or treble that amount, it starts to become much more difficult to absorb because our income situation really is a zero-sum game. If we gain, if we void bills on ten percent of the people, the other ninety percent have essentially twelve percent rate increase to pay for that. And similarly, if we went to the point of half the people not paying, the other half would have to pay double. In that our, our user charges are the source of our income, and of course, we have to pay our bills to keep things current and keep things running.
So I guess that makes it clear enough that regardless of what that is, the amount owed by Urbana residents would exceed the one percent that we've set aside for this program?
If, if the go, if the intent was to pay off a hundred percent of everybody's indebtedness, the one percent would not be sufficient.
Even just, even just for?
Because the number of people will not be eligible, and because some people will not get all of their debt written off is why I am pretty certain the one percent will last for several months if it doesn't last through the whole thing. Again, trying to prognosticate exact participation and how people are going to go in regards to these times of COVID is impossible. And so we do have to sort of adjust on the fly as you guys have done in a number of your programs and why you have all of these administrative orders is because every month we have a new challenge, right? So we'll start at one percent and we'll see how that works is my commitment to my staff and how I'm looking at this.
So one, one, one thing, sorry to keep, keep going on it, Rick, I, I'm just, you know, I, I understand you've explained the limitations, what can be done. Well, I'm glad to hear that it's double, that it's at least a hundred dollars. Because as you've alluded, one of the things, one of the issues I raised when we, when this was brought up is that I bet that there were a lot of people who've not been able to pay their bills due to job loss or whatever related since the pandemic happens. Is there any chance as this program is being administered that you guys are going to be able to track? Even without, you know, a bulk tracking Urbana residents, just to seek them out, I'm sure you would do that naturally through some sort of accounting process. But those who fall into that particular hardest hit category of people who haven't, who have bills in excess of a hundred dollars, I guess, is what I'm getting at. And if you are encountering those folks, are applying for LIHEAP, they're getting, you know, referred into the program, they're getting their hundred dollar credit, but they still have something remaining, I would highly encourage, if it's at all possible, that that, those folks are tracked and referred to the Cunningham Township because we've implemented a number of programs over there, and I bet Danielle Chanel with our township supervisor would be more than happy to talk to you about how the township might be able to help cover that balance that's left on those three angel donor funds or a number of the other programs we have available over there. Because those are the people who are in the most trouble, and those are the people who need the most help, and I just think it would be, it'd be behooves to be able to help and direct at the very least that hardest hit group towards a little bit more, a little bit more relief.
I will reach out and contact her and confirm what reference we can make, but yes, to the extent that they would be amenable to us referring people to them, we can provide that information to essentially everybody. Hey, if you're having problems with bills, here's a resource to go to. You know, one of the things that I note is that our bill is one of the smaller bills that people may be facing. If they are behind in our bill, they are certainly behind in other more significant and more substantial bills. And so I imagine that type of, the person in that situation is, is looking for any lifelines they can manage to get you. So thanks for that advice, and we'll, we'll work on forwarding that information.
Thank you.
Okay, so before you again is the ordinance to the emergency order, the ordinance to ratify the emergency order, which will provide about up to twenty six, possibly twenty six thousand dollars in relief. Motion was made by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Sharice. Are we ready to vote? Mary Alice?
I have one more question. Rick, so if somebody is in arrears, what is, what happens? You can't discontinue, you can't shut off service to sewers. So is it, is it a legal issue? What happens if somebody falls so far into arrears?
Well, so pre-COVID, we did have the ability to disconnect water sys, water connection for our bills. Most times, the water bills were an initial reason why somebody gets their water shut off, and so we, our, our procedure is slower than theirs, and so usually people get their water shut off for a water bill delinquency before UCSD, but once in a while, there have been people who are delinquent on our bill works. And so pre-COVID, there was the threat of water disconnection. And unfortunately, we need to retain that because again, we can't really make paying our bills voluntary a hundred percent. Because at that point, it ends up becoming Because at that point, it ends up becoming a system where the people who volunteered to pay just keep on paying a higher and higher amount. That being said, during COVID, we've recognized that disconnection of water would not be a good thing. Of course, back in March, when the emergency order came through, the water utilities were prevented from doing any disconnections. And so from March through September, there were no disconnections for, for financial reasons. When it became possible via Commerce Commission rules to begin disconnections again for lack of payment of bills, if people did not express a concern about COVID, we chose to maintain the moratorium because we really couldn't see where it was going to be very productive. And so right now, we don't have a method for disconnection. And so all that happens is that debt accumulates. We do process a one-time late charge as debt goes into being passed due. And so we do process that charge. But right now, all that happens is it continues to accumulate. We bill property owners and so ultimately that can turn into a lien on the property.
All right, thank you. Okay. Ready to vote? Sharice, are we, is this a quick question? We do have a packed agenda to get through.
It just struck me, when, when you say you bill the property owners, are you also talking about like apartment owners? And they're, they're the ones that'll be responsible for their tenants or bills and so on and so forth?
Correct. Ultimately, it is the property owner, which is the apartment building owner in this case. And perhaps you, you can get my contact information from Carol if there are any questions after this. I'm more than happy to answer those two.
Okeydoke.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Yes. Sorry, actually, Bill is reporting this out. That was a question from the clerk. So yes, this is ordinance number 2020 dash 12 dash 069.
Yeah, I'd already mentioned that. I couldn't hear the clerk.
Yeah, and we do have a motion and a second.
So on behalf of the committee, I move for approval again.
I'll second.
Well, that was already moved by Bill and seconded by Sharice.
All right. So it's done, okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Roberts?
You're muted.
Yes, I realize now. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay, next up on the agenda is ordinance number 2020 dash 12 dash 072. An ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number four omnibus. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Mary Alice?
When I talked to Elizabeth, I just wanted to clarify because she was able to clarify the memo. I don't know if people saw that. We're not increasing the expenses by over half a million dollars to the general fund. Well, technically we are, but it's being counteracted by the grants that are coming in. So Elizabeth, was it approximately $6,000? Is that right that we calculated?
The, the decrease in fund balance in the general fund is about $6,200.
Okay, all right. So I just wanted people to be aware, we're not increasing our, we're not increasing our, our balance by half a million dollars or negative half a million dollars. I just thought it was good to make that clarification.
Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next up on the agenda is resolution number 2020 dash 12 dash 06R. A resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Race Street resurfacing project. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next up on the agenda is resolution number 2020 dash 12 dash 06062R. A resolution approving an emergency solution grants program sub-recipient agreement with CU at Home for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. And on behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Dennis. Further discussion? Reese?
I just wanted to acknowledge something that Sarah Nixon was saying about the fear of certain people being turned out of the one-door policy based on their orientation and, and identity. Is that an issue that we will be able to deal with going into this contract with them regarding the one-door?
Well, it's an issue you'll be able to discuss next week when they do a presentation. And I also have a list of, of the many, many, many community agencies and organizations who've had input and assistance in planning the program. So did Lori, Lori, did you have further comment?
Well, I just wanted to say that no one's been turned away as far as I know through this, through their homeless provisions. They were selected by the continuum, the countywide continuum of care in order to provide this very necessary service. Many other organizations throughout the, the county are also getting funding through this, through this funding source. So the money is being spread out among many organizations, but nobody gets turned away through this program. The ESG program, just to be clear.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next up on the agenda is resolution number 2020 dash 12 dash 063R. A resolution approving an emergency solution grants program sub-recipient agreement with Cunningham Township fiscal year 2020 through 2021. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bill Colbrook, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next up on the agenda is resolution number 2020 dash 12 dash 067R. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community partnership agreement. Rose Krantz Incorporated, One Door Program Director. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval.
Go ahead.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay. I did want to follow up on questions that came, a question that came in last week about the extent of the community involvement and input into the development of the program. Lieutenant Sanders provided some information today. It was sent out to the council, but I wanted to share it tonight. The One Door, as you know, has been in the planning stages for several years, but it really started up in earnest back in April of 2019. So over the past 20 months, the, they have received a great deal of input and guidance from a number of community agencies and organizations. The Crisis Intervention Team Steering Committee meets on a regular basis and they're one of the leaders in the development of this, or input into this program. So agencies represented at the Crisis Intervention Team Steering Committee include CU Races. Races is a program that provides support and services to people affected by sexual trauma. Carl Hospital, Champaign County State's Attorney's Office, Courage Connection Pavilion, Life Links, Champaign County Healthcare Consumers, Cunningham Township, Champaign County NAMI, that's the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Prairie Center, CU Autism Network, Veterans Administration Danville, Salt and Light, Champaign County Mental Health Board, of course, CU at Home, Rose Krantz, OSF Healthcare, the police departments from Parkland, Champaign, the Champaign County Sheriff's Office, Rantle Police, Urbana Police, and Met Cat. Lieutenant Sanders has also met with representatives from United Way, several Champaign County Board members, Smile Politely Media, Senator Scott Bennett's office. And he's provided formal presentations to the Champaign County Mental Health Board, the Reentry Council, the Community Action Board, the Community Coalition Executive Board, the Coalition of Service Providers to the Homeless, the Urbana Council, and the CU Public Health I Plan Behavioral Work Group. So there's been a very broad spectrum of agencies and organizations involved in the development of this pilot program. And again, I'll remind folks that next week, there will be a, another presentation on the plans for the launch and the representatives from the, the main partnerships. That's Carl, Rose Krantz, CU at Home, and City of Urbana will be here next week. Jared, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, just a quick follow-up. And I, of course, have seen the email with the list of organizations. But I guess it's, you know, my, my immediate reaction to it was, well, in what way? You know, it doesn't, listing a lot of people you had a phone call with one time or talked to for five minutes or exchanged a couple of emails with or, you know, you know, I could, I could have considered having been had input on it because I've commented on it in city council meetings. That doesn't necessarily mean I had a substantial input to it. So I'm just curious, I know you've been a part of the process, obviously. To what extents was, are the folks on that list, you know, strong contributors, medium contributors? You know, just honorary contributors because they were involved in a meeting one time? I mean, it didn't really offer a lot of insight into the process.
At the Crisis Intervention Team Steering Committee meets on a regular basis. So they're the ones who have been providing probably the most regular input and guidance. As far as what each individual organization contributed, I, I can't tell you at this point. But it's something that we could, if you'd like more information, I could, we could get that. Or I would say could be provided next week at the presentation.
Sure, it's just, you know, it's one, it's just one thing to make a list of who's out there. And it's an entirely different thing to say what they're involved in. It's actually been what, what somebody's actually contributed. And I'm really just getting at, you know, there just hasn't been a lot of information that's been, been shared about this. And again, I just don't feel like, you know, I guess a lot of people have been talked to. But, you know, I'm just worried about community input and people actually being able to be a part of creating this and not just a bunch of top-tier administrative people and organizations deciding how something like this is going to get administered and done, so.
Well, the other thing to keep in mind, this is a pilot. So in a pilot, you, you launch it and you, you plan for it, you launch it, and then you adapt and learn from it as you go along. So I think there will be opportunity for us to learn from the experience and also for us to continue to, to gather input. And really, until you try it and are on the street and, you know, having it operate every day, that's when you really get the valuable feedback and based on experience that you need. So there will be opportunity all along for input to modify this program and adapt it and learn from it as we go. Bill Colbrook?
I'm not going to speak for the steering committee, but I can assure you, it's more than just a list. The steering committee, like the mayor said, meets on a regular basis. The, the agencies that have been listed have had substantive input along the way as the One Door program has been a regular agenda item at the steering committee. So those agencies, in my opinion, represent a wide breadth, you know, across the, the community. There's just not figureheads that meet.
Dennis?
Yeah, the, the memo is kind of instructive to us. If we believe that Rosenkrantz is a valid organization that does good work in our community, which I think you can't help but agree to, the memorandum indicates that Rosenkrantz has agreed to be the partner that will hire and oversee the director of One Door for at least the pilot year. And this program also meets one of the other requests that we've heard often again from the, the community, which is the city proposes to use funds reallocated from the police salary line to pay the initial year cost for the One Door director. We've had a lot of people in this community talk about defunding the police. Well, we're not going to completely defund the police, but we are amenable apparently to shift some of the income that might have been used to hire police services to this service, which is a crisis intervention keystone in the community. So I think I find this to be a suitable pilot program with a lot of potential and I do support it.
Any other comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Reports of special committees. I don't think we have any tonight. Reports of officers. Carol?
There were a couple of questions that were posed to me last week that I just wanted to follow up on. So Jared had asked me about filling potholes in advance of winter really setting in. And I talked to Tim from Public Works and our, our crews are out and they are working in as much, filling potholes as they can with, with their work routines. And also we have the pothole patcher that's out, that's a, you know, sort of a self-contained machine that only requires a single operator and, and that's out on a regular basis. And we do have a source of the asphalt emulsion through the winter. So we'll be running that all, all winter long. I also had a question from Dennis about the sidewalk snow removal. So I thought I would very quickly just run through the details of that program. So there's three districts where property owners fronting certain streets in those districts. And I will share my screen and show the maps real quick. This is the university district. If the Public Works Director declares that the sidewalk snow removal ordinance is in effect, then from the time of that declaration, which is usually made when there's two inches or, or more of snow or ice that have accumulated on the sidewalk, that the folks in these areas have 24 hours to remove the snow and ice from, from the sidewalks. So this is the university district and I realized that the map needed to be adjusted and it now goes up to the south side of university. And we'll be getting a new map for the website that was amended in 2019. This is the South Philo Road area. And then finally, we have the downtown area as well. So just wanted to follow up on that. And I'm happy to answer any questions about either of those items or anything else you want to ask me.
Any questions for Carol? Any questions for Carol? Okay, thanks. Little, little did we know when we purchased the pothole patcher, would it be the, one of the most COVID-safe Public Works pieces of equipment that we own, since it's self-contained and one person can do it all. I just had a couple of items I wanted to share with you. Number one, Senator Tammy Duckworth's office has invited mayors in central Illinois to a meeting on Wednesday. She wants to, for 30 minutes, she wants to learn more about the economic impact of COVID on municipalities. We could take about 30 hours to talk about that, but we'll try to get our, our message across. I appreciate that opportunity. Again, that's going to be Wednesday afternoon. We continue to meet with the university on the possibility of expanding the university's saliva testing process to the community. This will be a strategic rollout in the community. It won't be open to every single person in Urbana, but they are trying to identify the most vulnerable populations, people who need it the most, essential workers, and that sort of thing. We also learned today there's a possibility that we can apply for More Cures Act funding that would cover the cost of the test. One of the limitations is that the university can't afford, of course, to provide this test to everyone for free. So we're going to have to come up with a way to pay for $20 for a test for each person twice a week. So hopefully, we can access Cures Act funding. And plans remain, plans are underway, of course, for distribution of the vaccine in the community, and they expect to get the first shipment of vaccine, fairly limited amount, this week. And that will go to healthcare workers and then people in long-term care facilities as the first tier. But the vaccine should start arriving very shortly. Okay, and I'll keep you posted on the, it's a lot, a lot in the works this week. Hopefully, we'll have some more news on saliva testing as we go forward. Okay, under new business, we have a staff appointment. Shannon Clark, and this would be for the Deputy Finance Director. And I believe Elizabeth, we need to introduce her, and then Shannon is here, and we'll, we'll get to meet her.
Yeah, there she is. So, so we're very excited to welcome Shannon Clark to the city. We, as the mayor noted in her memo, we did some minor changes in the org chart in finance when we had some turnover, and so we created a Deputy Finance Director position to make sure that we have appropriate professional staffing and backup, and also as part of transition planning, because sadly, at some point, I will retire. And so we were very excited to have such a qualified applicant for this position. Shannon has, is a certified public accountant. She has many years of experience, some of it in government, some in non-for-profit, and much of it in the private sector. So with that, I'll let her maybe say a few words.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the consideration for this position and for your trust and confidence, Mayor Marlin Elizabeth Carroll, for appointing me to this position. I look forward to working with all of you with the city's administrative departments. And I believe my past experience, as Elizabeth noted, and finance experience, working in local government, not-for-profit, and the private sector, will help to build upon the already documented success, commitment to growth, and the solid core values of the City of Urbana. I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and I'm very excited to become a part of the team.
Thank you, and welcome, Shannon. We're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, you too.
All righty, next up is Resolution 2020-12-068R, which is a resolution accepting the Urbana Kickapoo Rail Trail Extension Study.
I'm just going to turn it over to Gabe Lewis, actually, with the RPC, and he's going to just present for a few moments.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, counsel. Let me pull up. All right, can you see Urbana Kickapoo Rail Trail Extension Study?
Yes.
Excellent. I just want to provide an update from when I was here last in early October. I talked about most of the plan, and we do have nine chapters. I'm just going to talk about what's in this, these final two sections with public involvement implementation.
Gabe, Gabe, I'm very sorry to interrupt you. We needed to vote on that appointment, and I was so excited.
That's all right.
I was so excited to have Shannon on board. I completely forgot to call for the vote. So I need a motion for approval.
I move to approve Shannon Clark as Deputy Finance Director.
I'll second it.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Bill. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Again, I sincerely apologize to Shannon for not taking that vote. Okay, Gabe, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, mayor. All right, let me go. Okay, so just as a reminder, this study area is 2.4 miles long, and we're looking all the way to Lincoln Avenue. We divided the study into four sections. And we, in the October public comment period, presented five alternatives for folks to vote on during the month-long period. And we advertised that it was hosted on our website. People were able to provide comments through email or the Google form or mail, and we were happy to get 35 responses. So 32 people provided comments on the comment form. And then we also heard from three property owners in the study area, and two of them just had some concerns about the study, but we did talk about that. Nothing is necessarily happening right now. This is just a study that we wanted to make them aware of. So out of the 32 people that submitted comment forms, most voted for alternative one or three. And between, with, based on that and all of our existing conditions analysis, that is what we went with for the final alternative. So we basically merged these, section one, that is Lincoln Avenue to Broadway. We are proposing to extend this trail on either the north or south side of the railroad, depending on land availability. And then sections two through four would be on the south side of the railroad. And here, you can just see, we've included some renderings that were done by landscape architecture students at the U of I, and it shows what a rail with trail would look like with either a fence separation, that you can see in the top picture, or planter boxes. So this is looking west towards Carl Hospital, and this is looking east towards Ray Street and Leo Park. This would be going towards the Boneyard Creek Crossing. And then this is even further east towards the Station Theater, where we do have some limitation with space. Two other comments or categories, we included information on in the report, and I wanted to let, let you know about is, we talk about the recent and ongoing work that's happening to continue implementing the Kickapoo Rail Trail. One is work on the 2018 East Urbana Study, which includes a grant application. We helped the city submit for Baker's Lane, which is on the east side of Weaver Park, to develop a trail. There's been coordination with the Norfolk Southern Railroad Legislatur, legislators, and continues to be. I want to note that an expansion of the KRT is a priority of this mayor and council, and so we're happy to provide this study to, that this helps fulfill that goal. And then we acknowledge that the city, the Park District, and the Forest Preserve, the three major partners in this study, will have to continue working with the active rail line users, which is DART, Amulseco, and the railroad. And then we also mentioned that there are committees working on this. There's a regional KRT committee. There's a Friends of the KRT group that has formed this year. And then there's ongoing construction and efforts to keep building the trail. So the photo you see is the new section in Oakwood, in Vermillion County, that opened this year. And then next summer, the section in Kickapoo State Park over the bridge is expected to open. So very exciting to see this continue. And finally, we, we categorized these next steps after the study into five groups, five items. One is fundraising and land acquisition. And we did perform a very initial cost estimate for building this trail, which would be $2 million. And so that's why there need to be grants and a lot of, you know, fundraising efforts, private funding, what have you. We do list some sources where that can be tapped. And again, the three agencies involved would be the ones that should try to lead this effort. Engineering and environmental surveys also will need to be done. Phase construction, this all isn't going to happen at once, but we're recommending that section one from Lincoln to Broadway or Lincoln to Vine gets the top priority. Addressing the Vine Street Railroad Bridge, since that's going to have to be addressed by the railroad at some point anyway. And then developing trailheads where people can access the trail. And this map shows 12 locations we've identified that trailheads could be placed. So the Urbana Park District Board approved, or accepted the findings last week, and we're coming to you tonight with the same request. And the Forest Preserve Board will consider that on Thursday, and will be submitting the document to OBT by the end of the month. So that's my update, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Gabe? Bill?
I'm just going to move approval, move, I'll move approval of ordinance number 2020-12-068R, Resolution Accepting the Urbana Kickapoo Rail Trail Extension Study.
There a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Counsel discussion?
Okay. I would.
Dennis?
As usual, the Regional Planning Commission has made an extremely thorough and intriguing report, so kudos to you guys. It's a trail that is going to assist mobility across the, but across the community, and I'm hoping that attention can also go to other possible trail connections in the future.
Bill Brown, and then Sharice?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank RPC and Gabe for bringing people together to get this, get this accomplished, and I think you did a good job, and it'll be form of good basis for applying for grants in the future.
Sharice?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, Gabe, with the, the plan that, with the, the trail going on the north side of university, I guess my question, main question is, is that, is that railroad ever used anymore? I get, I live so closely to railroad tracks that I actually hear, you know, when I was in LA, I used to hear airplanes. I hear trains all the time back home. So is, would that create an issue for the trail having to cross tracks at all?
Well, to answer your question, yes, the railroad is currently being used by DART and Amulseco, but it is very low frequency, so it's about twice a week, because once a week for each company. And what we proposed is that the trail would only cross at an existing street crossing, so at Broadway Avenue. So you wouldn't have to, you know, you would have a trail that would come up to the street, and then Broadway would have that, you know, the flashing lights or the arms or whatever, so that people couldn't cross if there was a train there. But there is guidance from IDOT that they, they can, there can be a trail next to an active railroad, just as long as you have enough separation, and since we proposed in the plan.
Okey-dokey.
Any other counsel comments? I just would also like to thank RPC for taking the lead on this study. They applied for the grant from the state and received it. I also want to thank Carl Foundation Hospital again for providing the $25,000 match that was required. The city did not have those funds, and Carl stepped up and did that. This is a project that's a long-term project. It's not going to be built next year. These rail trails take years to develop, but studies, the feasibility study is the first step. We have it, and this is a huge first step. And the project wouldn't go anywhere without it. So, so we're grateful to RPC's leadership and Gabe's hard work and that of his team, and along with our partners, Park District, Forest Preserve District, et cetera. So, so we're looking forward to the next phase. And this, long-term, this would just be a game changer in, in going through downtown Urbana. So, thank you, and with that, I'll call for a vote.
Ms. Wu?
Yeah.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is ordinance number 2020-12-073, which is an ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 21st, 2020, and ending June 1st, 2021.
And if it's okay, I'll speak to the last three ordinances all as a group because they're kind of a package here. So, so you may remember back in mid-November, we approved the estimated tax levy, and at that time, I gave you a bunch of slides that explained the process, and I also talked about what we were going to levy. So now the time has come to make that final. And to do that, you need to approve actually three ordinances. So the first is the ordinance that actually levies the taxes for 2020, which we will receive in calendar year 2021. The second ordinance is an ordinance that would abate the levy in order to maintain our current tax rate of $134.99. And that's necessary because when we levy taxes, we do not have the final assessed valuation, so we can't make an exact calculation. So we shoot a little bit high, and then we cap it off and bring it back down. And then the third is an ordinance that abates debt service payments for the 2012 and 2014 general obligation bonds. So the reason we use general obligation bonds in that case is because you tend to obtain a better tax, a better interest rate because they're backed by the city's taxing authority. But in fact, we pay that debt service from the TIFT II and local motor fuel tax funds. And so the, the bond ordinance, bond ordinances that were adopted back in 2012 and 2014 require the county clerk to levy those taxes unless we abate them. So all three of these ordinances work together to give you the tax levy that we discussed in mid-November.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Okay, I have a motion for ordinance number 2020-12-073.
Sure, I'll do that. I move that we adopt ordinance 12-2012-073, an ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021.
Who is the second?
Bill Brown.
Bill Brown, okay. Discussion. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is ordinance number 2020-12-074. This is an ordinance directing the Champaign County Clerk to abate the tax levy for the General Corporate Fund for the tax year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Is there a discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last up is ordinance number 2020-12-075, an ordinance directing the Champagne County Clerk to abate a portion of the 2020 tax levy related to general obligation bonds, Series 2012, and general obligation bond, Series 2014.
I'll move their approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Sharice. Counsel discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passed. And with no further business before the city council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and we'll see you next week.